The Weathersfield School Board meeting for January ninth, twenty twenty four. Um, let's see, we're gonna start off with. We'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Finn, you wanna lead us in that?
Sure, yeah. All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thanks, Finn.
You're welcome.
Um, okay, up next, we have. Um, if there are any introductions needed, do we? Anybody? On here?
No, I think we're good, Anne Marie.
Okay. All right, um. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda? Today's mainly about the budget. Is there anybody online that can just talk about anything else? If you have anything to say, just go ahead and raise your hand and I will call. Okay. Oh, Becky. Oh, did you do? I'm sorry, I didn't even notice that Becky wasn't here. Sorry, Becky, we just, we just started. And we only did the Pledge of Allegiance so far.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry about that. See, um, I have approval of the minutes from December twelfth, and I unfortunately did not read them over. I was very busy today and had some other last minute stuff come up, so I did not get a chance to read those over. Did anybody else get a chance to read them over enough to vote? All right, we can put it off to next month's meeting. We've, we've all been busy with other stuff today. The budget is all consuming, so we'll put that off till next month. Um. Is there any public participation? If you have anything, just raise your hand. Don't see anybody. Okay, so we'll move on to student presentation of learning. Do we have that today, Brian?
No, not today, since we're just focusing on the budget.
Okay, so we'll move on to the administrative reports and we'll start with yours.
All right, so we have our Weathersfield budget report for FY twenty five. So first off, we do know that there's an increase in our Weathersfield school budget this year. So there's a few items that are the cause of our increase. So first off, we had, and I'm just gonna highlight a few of the items, and then we'll go from there as we go throughout the presentation. So we had a sixteen point eight percent healthcare increase. High school tuition costs are up because we have more students going to, more students going into high school than are leaving high school. Um, we did have an increase in the Weathersfield share of the SU's assessment due to increased enrollment at Weathersfield. Um, we have in the budget a full-time health teacher. We also have a full-time world language teacher. Um, we did change our art teacher from sixty percent to a hundred percent, so we have a full-time art teacher reflected in this year's budget as well as two ESSR-funded teaching positions. So as you can see here, our total wages and benefits have increased. Um, last year, we had budgeted a hundred or one million nine hundred and seventy-three dollars. One million nine hundred and seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars. And this year, our budget is two million, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars. Um, that obviously reflects personnel increases and also wage and benefits increases. And then you can see there that our benefits have increased as well, reflecting that sixteen point eight percent for health costs and other benefit costs for our employees. Um, high school tuition, like I mentioned, has gone up as well. Um, we have eight new high school students that are going in. We have a large eighth grade class this year that is going to be freshman next year, and the cost of high school choice does cost us money. Um, and then we have more kids going into ninth grade than we do leaving high school for next year. So that's an increase there as well. Maintenance and repair, um, last year, we had budgeted a hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-three thousand. This year, we did budget more money in that account, a hundred and forty-six thousand, seven ninety-seven. And one of the big ticket items in there is furniture for our kindergarten classrooms. Um, most of the furniture in there is from before the schools, when they were two separate schools. So we're trying to update that and make that safer for students. Um, transportation costs have gone up. Um, this is something that we added money to the budget for not only our McKenna Vento students, um, also for athletics as well as, um, academic, um, trips for like after-school clubs and stuff for them to go to different programs, so the transportation cost there. Um, communication, insurance, and postage, like everything else right now in the world, it's gone up. Um, so that's an increase of a little over five thousand dollars. Um, books and supplies have gone up. A lot of this, we can contribute to, um, having students have more hand-on, hands-on experiences, real-life experiences. So those having more things for your kids to do does take more supplies, so our money increase is there as well. And then our total SU assessments did go up, as you can see there. Our FY twenty-four budget was one million, eight hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars. This year, it is, um, up to two million, three hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars. So we had an increase in equalized people from twenty-three point four-five percent to twenty-five point nine percent. Um, so more than forty percent of that is that increase within our Weathersfield assessment. And it's due to the fact that Weathersfield enrollment is continuing to grow, in, um, enrollment is continuing to grow, and it's relative to other members in our member districts that have reduced the numbers of students. Um, there is our overall, there's another chart of our equalized people history where you can see how other school districts' numbers have decreased over the years. So we're getting a bigger piece of that pie with more students coming in to Weathersfield than the other two districts within our supervisory union. And then there's just a breakdown of all of our proposed FY twenty-five budget. I'll give everybody a chance to take a look at that, and if there's any questions on this particular slide, I can go back and answer those items on there. I know that's a lot of information to take all at once. But the budget items I showed you before, some of them were combined together, like obviously furniture and equipment was part of um, one of the other areas as far as. So I'll quit talking for a minute and let everybody look, sorry. Go ahead, Mark.
Um, can you tell us what all is included in the line of assessments? Everything that will be considered for assessments?
Yeah, so those are the SU assessments. So those go under, um, we have our early childhood education. We had administration and operation. We have our food services, and then we also have special education. And so those are all the services that we get from the supervisory union.
Okay, so that's all in that same category?
Yeah, that's all under assessments, yep.
Great.
Go ahead, Jimmy.
So I noticed on the revised budget that you sent us, and I can see it here also in the debt and transfers, that the interest on long-term debt significantly decreased from the original budget that you had provided us last meeting. Just wanted to make sure that's accurate.
That is accurate. So our debt services, so our, um, our interest on the debt almost shrank in half. It went from fifty thousand dollars last year to twenty-six thousand dollars this year.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yep. So the more we're paying it, the less interest we have, which is great. So we're almost at the end of that one. All right, any other questions on this slide? All right, I'm gonna go ahead and go. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and let Ed take over, and then I can be here as well to answer questions. So he's gonna give us Act one twenty-seven breakout and do some other information on that as well.
Can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Oh, good.
Brian, you're gonna have to click that in the slide to open it for Ed.
I don't think I have access to that, so you may have, I may have to stop sharing and let you share it. Because I tried to open it earlier, I.
It didn't open, okay.
So let me stop sharing.
Well, let me make sure I can open it. Oh, yeah, I can, okay.
Yeah, you were able to open it earlier.
All right, hold on, Anne, I'll get you started here. All right, Ed, can you see that?
Yes.
Let me see if I can make it a little bit bigger. Um, I, I think I tried to help your clicking, but it, it's not perfect, so I'm just gonna click and see if those come in, is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, so at the very top, uh, what that shows is how we developed and what we used to develop the ed spending per pupil in FY twenty-four, which is the year we're in. Okay, so we had a twenty-four budget of seven million, four eighty-seven, fifty dollars, and a local revenue of ninety-eight to ninety-three. So our ed spending was the budget, which is the seventy-four eighty-seven, less the local revenue equals the ed spending. That's what goes into the formula, and they then use, in twenty-four, they used equalized pupil. And they divided that equalized pupil number into the ed spending, and they came up with an ed spending per equalized pupil of twenty thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars and forty cents. Okay? So then subsequently, the, the state decided that they were gonna change the way they counted students. So prior to this, they were using equalized pupil. So they used the new weighting formula. They took, they gave higher weights to special ed, to poverty, to English language learners and things like that, and to try to give, uh, towns that had more of those type of students more money to educate them, because the thought was that it took more money to educate a student, like an English language learner or a, uh, special ed student than it would to take, uh, a, 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 another student. So in order to get, they then were gonna use a formula that I'll show you later to try to compare the, the pupil costs. So to do that, they needed to take the twenty-four budget and translate it into this new count. So what they did was, in the second one down, the same budget, the same local revenue, the same ed spending, but what changed is now they have a number they call long-term weighted average, which is the five thirty-nine sixty-one, okay? So as you can see, what they do there, the same thing they did above, is they took that five thirty-nine sixty-one, and they divided it into the, the ed spending of seven million, three eighty-eight, seven fifty-seven. And they came up with an ed spending per long-term weighted average of thirteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars and seventy-seven cents. Okay? So we go down to the FY twenty-five ed spending, and we have the same, the same format. The budget, the local revenue, the ed spending, the long-term weighted average, and then they have the thirteen million, eight forty-three oh three. Okay? Then they take that, that FY twenty-four long-term weighted average, and they, they then divide it, or they, excuse me, they compare it to the FY twenty-five number. So the FY twenty-five ed spending of thirteen thousand, eight forty-three oh three is one point one zero percent higher than the FY twenty-four number. So is every, is there any questions around any of that?
They just add that, that, that's under the ten percent, um, per pupil, so they, you stayed under the, um, per pupil count, uh, per pupil cost must be under ten percent.
So they made this comparison because they then introduced a rule where they said that if you stayed within under ten percent, okay, under a ten percent increase, when you compared these two numbers, that they would guarantee that your pre-CLA number would be five percent more than your FY twenty-four pre-CLA number, okay? So that next chart below is just that. It shows you what the FY twenty-four pre-CLA number is, and then it shows you what the FY twenty-five number is. Because you stayed under the ten percent, your FY twelve-five pre-CLA number is going to be five percent more than the twenty-four, okay? And in the next iteration, we'll see the, uh, result of that, okay? So the first thing I'm gonna show you is what your budget and tax rate would look like before you, to institute that new, uh, that five percent increase in your CLA, okay? So you get your total budget. You got your local revenue. You subtract it out, and you get your ed spending. You get your long-term weighted average. You get your ed spending per long-term weighted average. You get your property yield. You get your pre, your tax, right? So let's back up a little bit. Your ed spending per long-term weighted average is just that five ninety point five seven divided into the ed spending of eight million, one eighty-three sixty-nine, six ninety-one, excuse me. Okay? That gives you the thirteen thousand, eight fifty-seven, twenty-eight, right? Then the state gives us a number, and the property yield is what they're saying. The property yield is a number, and the best way I can explain it is to say that if you could educate your kid, or kids, or students, I should say, um, for nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars, right, per, per student, right? Your tax rate would be a dollar, all right? But because you're over, because the number we're dealing with for you guys is thirteen, eight fifty-seven, twenty-eight. They take that number, the property yield, and they divide it into the thirteen thousand, eight fifty-seven, twenty-eight. And that's where they come up with the four, one point four six six one. Okay, so that's your pre-tax CLA number, all right? Now, why you say that? That's important, because if your CLA was a hundred percent, in this example, your tax rate would be one point four six six one, okay? Now we take the CLA, which is seventy-two percent, seventy-two point one eight percent, which means that a hundred percent would be, you're, you're appraised at a hundred percent of your, of the Weathersfield property values, but you're underappraised by the state's estimation. You're underappraised by close to what, uh, twenty-eight percent? So what they do here is they then take the, the pre-tax CLA, which is one point four six six one, and they divide it by seventy-two point one eight percent, and they come up with two dollars and three cents. Okay? Now, that's a significant increase for you guys. So in order to, to do this, they said, all right, if you stay under the ten percent, we're gonna, we're gonna guarantee you a pre-tax CLA number. That's gonna be, I think in the, in the other example, and I'll show you here, lower than what the pre-tax is in this actual calculation, all right? So ed spending, local revenue, total budget, long-term weighted average, ed spending per LTW, pre-tax, CLA. You could see what happened. The tax rate went down.
So what caused it to go down, Ed? I'm confused. What, what was the change?
So let's, let's look at the, um, pre-tax CLA. Okay? They forced that number. That number was put in there, so any spending between a zero percent increase and a ten percent increase, and that comparison between ed spending per long-term weighted average that I showed you earlier would result in that pre-tax out, CLA number staying the same. And because that stays the same, the tax rate stays the same. So no matter how much money you spend, as long as you stay be, uh, under ten percent in that calculation of equalized long-term weighted average per equalized pupil, your tax rate's a dollar ninety-six. So the change between the two.
Ed, you're saying no matter what we do?
No matter how much you spend, no matter how much you spend.
Up to the, up to the, uh, ten percent. Right, so your, your increase per pupil, long-term weighted average, was one point one, I think. You could spend up to nine point nine percent total, which would be, I don't know, another eight hundred thousand dollars or so on your budget, and your tax rate would still be one point nine six.
And even if we cut, our tax rate's still gonna be one point nine six.
We'd have to cut it so that the formula, because they forced that one point four oh one five two, the pre-tax CLA number in there, what we used to calculate it, it doesn't work until the tax rate, the pre-CLA number gets under one point four oh one five two. So it's significant, a lot, it's a lot of money to get underneath that. So to actually takes the tax rate, you'd, you'd have to, to get a five percent cut in taxes, you'd, you'd have to cut one point one million dollars. Or to guarantee a five percent increase in the tax rate, I'm sorry. Because last year's tax rate was one point, hold on, one point six six four six, or one point six six four six, which in order to make it work in this formula, you'd have to cut, for a five percent increase in the tax rate, you'd have to cut one point one four one million. And to get a ten percent decrease, you'd have to cut eight hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine.
So can I just clarify that, Ed? So to get the tax rate increase down to a ten percent increase?
Mm-hmm.
They would have to cut the budget by eight hu, what did you say, eight hundred and six?
Eight oh, eight oh five, nine thirty-nine.
Eight oh five, nine thirty-one, because you didn't get to the final increase, right? Do you want me to go to the next slide, or do you wanna?
No, the final, yeah, you can get to the next slide.
Okay. Let me, um, go to the.
We have a question online?
Yeah, sorry, this is a pretty, maybe this is a pretty basic question, but if you're increasing the spending and the tax rate isn't increasing, then where is that difference being made up?
That's the six million dollar question. Um, I don't know what the answer to that is. I've had people tell me that it's gonna be, they're gonna adjust the sales tax, they're gonna do all kinds of things, but you're right. The other thing that they could do is they could change the property yield number of nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-two. So the higher that number goes, the, the, the lower the pre-tax number goes, and the lower that adjustment. So if you increase the property yield, what ends up happening is you're gonna, you're gonna lower the tax rate. But that still doesn't answer your question, because what happens, where, they, they still have to come up with that money somewhere. Now, I don't know how they're gonna do that. And at the last board meeting, we had this discussion with the budget committee and with the school board, and when I, I said the same thing, and the people at that meeting identified the same thing you did, and that is, who's gonna make up that zero to ten percent spending? What if one school district decides to spend a nine point nine nine, and another one spends, like you guys, one point two percent? There's still, somebody's making up your one point two percent, and somebody's making up the nine point nine percent. I don't know how they're gonna raise that money, and we've talked, as, as Christine will say, we've talked to people at the AOE, and they don't know.
Well, thank you. I just wasn't seeing the incentive for not spending money if there's.
Exactly.
Yeah, I'm kind of wondering, like, why are we putting all that five hundred and forty-nine thousand back into it? If, if that's not gonna change anything, like if we put that into our capital reserves, and that doesn't change the tax rate one iota, why, then, why don't do that, but?
You could consider that, I think, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Ed, it wouldn't change their tax rate.
No.
Right.
So, so we're basically giving that money away?
That's one way, that's one way to look at it, yes. You're right. There is no incentive for you to put that five forty-nine into your formula. I put it there because historically, at Weathersfield, it's up to the board to decide how to use that money. I'm just explaining to you.
So unless we make like draconian cuts to our budget, property taxes are going up, it's like seventeen to eighteen percent, right?
Let me, let me pull up the next slide. I think that has that information.
And, and the other thing is, is that in the past couple of years, what's ended up happening is that well after the school board meets and the school, and the town meeting is, the state decides, or the legislature decides to change the property yield. And when they change the property yield, I, I, I misspoke before, if it goes up, the tax rate goes down. They normally move it up. But it doesn't help anybody when they're going to the vote. You have to present it as it is right now. But I can tell you that across the state, what you guys are seeing, and at the other schools, the same thing is happening. Everybody is seeing a big increase because everybody is underappraised. That's where the real difference is, and you can see from this, in this particular slide, you look at the pre-tax CLA, right? Then you look at the, just the difference, so we hardcoded in the one point four oh one five two to show you. That's the five percent increase I was talking about, okay? So what's the difference between those two? It's, it's six point seven four cents. So just the difference in the CLA is about a seven cent increase. Okay, and then the next slide will show you. So Weathersfield, there's the seven cents in the pre-CLA, and then there's twenty-three cents in the CLA increase, for a total increase of thirty cents.
Candy Fuller has her hand raised? Candy?
She's got her microphone off.
We, we can't hear you. Um, do we have the chat option open? Like, can Candy type into the chat instead of?
I do believe she can. All right, let me just double-check that. Um, now she can.
So you wanna go ahead and type into the chat, since your microphone doesn't seem to be working? We can read out your comments. Oh, it's Dave. Oh, it's Dave. Okay, um, so. We heard you for a second there. Your microphone is turned off. So if you can try turning it back on. Yes, the town has scheduled a reappraisal and that's, I believe Brandon told us at our last meeting, that's next, next fall? Oh, not until 2026?
Finished.
Oy.
I think he just said it will be finished in 2026.
Yeah.
Can you, can you hear me now, Ann? Sorry.
Yeah, we can.
Okay. Yeah, Candy just plugged the mic in. That's, that's, I'd like to make a couple of points. This, this, this information that Ed just shared is kinda scary, but, but I would add very quickly, um, first of all, I, I would pay attention to what the state aid might be. I mean, last year, I think they increased it a lot. When they find out, all this stuff's gonna happen. At least six, our last information, I know I've talked to Brandon about this, 65% of the entire state is under the 85% threshold for reappraisal. That's like everybody. So we're not in any of this ship alone. That's right. I, I don't think we're gonna finish the reappraisal until 2026. We've already signed a contract with somebody to do that. $34,000 is approximately one penny. That's the last information that I've got on the tax rate. Close to that. What is the, is there a difference in the tax rates that's shown on the screen for homestead versus non-homestead or is that somewhere?
The, the non-homestead tax rate is gonna be set by the state. That's one of the ways they figure out how are they gonna make up some of the difference between that 0 and 10% I talked about?
Yep.
So it hasn't quite been set yet.
Is there any, so I, I don't know what you guys are gonna consider or not, but I just sit back and look sometimes, but, um, one of the things that I didn't, I didn't catch the screen where it said on, um, the percentages of transportation, um, or not, but I think through all these years, when we used to have our buses till the transition to the, to the contract, um, at least half or maybe even more of our parents choose to bring kids to school. I wonder, my first question would be, are we required to have transportation because it's gotten to be such a large amount? And that's, that's one question. Another one would be, um, could it be more centralized? I know lately we've run into some trouble on the roads and I wonder how full our buses are when we carry them anyway. And maybe they're full and I just don't know it, or I don't even know what I'm talking about, but I just threw that out there for some way. I know at the high school, anyway, um, there's a centralized area where buses will then come instead of riding on every single road, uh, with four buses. And I just, I just threw that one out there because of transportation, but my main point was about this, CLA, um, and my, my guess is now with us dropping, I, I don't know what it was before it got to 72, I think it was like 75 or 78. One of the concerns that I've had at the town was we have approximately 1,650 parcels of property in Weathersfield, 28,500 acres. And the formula that gets to the CLA to determine that is on a five-year cycle. So our, 2018 would have come in off and then 2023 would go on of the actual sales of properties. If you look, if you or I look right now in Weathersfield on Realtor.com or any, any of the ones, like just yesterday I looked and I think there were six properties on sale, for sale. My concern is, how are they basing this information that they gather and whether or not a percentage is met that matters? And through the numbers that I just threw out there, 1,650 total properties, I'm hoping that this thing isn't just made on, you know, like 30 houses or 50 houses for the year that change hands. But that's a, that's a formula issue. But if you look at any one time, I mean, there are not a lot of houses for sale that turn over. And I know they throw out the ones that may be family transfers or something like that, but, I, I guess I tried to just say what I wanna say, but I, I don't know about transportation. I didn't know about that. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Um, there's also a couple of comments in here in the chat from John Arison. He's also having trouble with his, his microphone. He states that if all districts spend because it doesn't affect the tax rate, the yield number in May will be much lower, which that's bad, right?
Yeah.
The only lever that the AOE has to adjust is to increase the non-homestead tax rate to increase revenue.
Now, John, John was on the legislative, uh, the ed, the education committee at the state. So he's been down this road before.
Also, I guess we didn't answer, um, we didn't answer Dave's question. Um, now I, from what I understood, this was a few years back. Transportation is not mandatory to pay for. Not that it would necessarily help us to solve this problem because I don't think it would cut $800,000, but, um-
And, and it is, um, at the SU level, the transportation budget in your local budget is just your local field trips, those, those types of things, but, um, the transportation contract is at the SU level for all of our districts. And but we can certainly look at the roots and if we're not being efficient in, you know, how, how full our buses are, et cetera. I mean, it's always balancing how long the kids are gonna be on the bus as well. And you have to, you have to take that into consideration, but certainly something that we can look at.
And it is something at Weathersfield that we look at every year. BJ and I go through all the bus routes to make sure and try to adjust and make, um, as many adjustments as possible. And then our buses are typically, I mean, it depends on the day. Some days they're fuller than others, but there are plenty of students that do ride the bus to and from school.
John just made another comment. He said this, I guess it was in answer to one of Dave's questions, the CLA looks back three years. And so we're still seeing effects of sales during COVID. So we're not gonna see, so even though maybe sales have dropped off this year, we're not gonna see that for like another two years.
The CLA last year was, um, 80.97 and this year it's 71, 72.18, which is, it declined by almost 11%.
Well, that's not 11%, but it's like eight and a half.
No, 8.97. I'm just talking as a percentage decline. If you take the difference and divide it by-
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you're, you're talking about the actual percent of the decline, yeah.
Do you, um, Ed, I'll go to the next slide if you wanna, it's just a visual of, of what makes up the tax rate. Do you wanna go onto that one? Okay.
This is just showing you how the tax rate is constructed. You can see the pre-CLA part, how much that costs, what the, what the 94.50 buys you, which is the dollar, and then the, in, when you apply all of it, what, what is the common level of appraisal piece? And this is showing what it would do to a, home values at different levels, 100, 200, 250, 300, 400. What the difference would mean in terms of the tax between taxes in '24 and the taxes for next year.
John had another thing to say. Um, he said, as mentioned earlier, we're not alone. The same discussion is happening across the state.
And if you go back to the other, um, yeah, I just wanna point out where Heartland is. Heartland right now is over the 10%. So they have to make some cuts to get under 10, but they're looking at a 43% increase or 43 cent increase. So it just reiterates what John's saying. Every town has got their, we're all, all the towns in this SU are underappraised and they're all getting hit for that, that, that under appraisal.
I think that, um, that concludes the budget presentation.
Looks like Dave has his hand raised.
Okay.
Go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, and I just, I, I want, I wanted to say that, um, and I just lost my train of thought, but it had to do with that when you cut off that about around the state, um, now maybe it'll come back to me.
Okay, we'll let you think about it. Raise your hand when you're ready. So now I'm gonna go back to what John was saying that, um, now if, if everybody overspends, you know, because it doesn't matter, or at least that's what it's looking like here, um, we're all gonna end up actually paying more because the yield is gonna go down, right?
Right.
Um, John just also said some districts are seeing a more positive effect from the new weighting figures. And then he says, correct? Not sure what he means with the correct. Now, our, we, we did do relatively well with the weighting, correct? Like ours are weighted-
If you look at the weighting-
Everybody else or is our weighting, you know, average?
It's hard to say because what you're looking at is you're looking at, uh, uh, the old equalized pupil number and, and from that thing, that slide, it's up significantly from the equalized pupil number. And your number for, uh, this year, I, I think the number they gave you for FY, they created a number for FY '24, right? And they said it was, uh, 539.61. So they just created that out of whole cloth. And then they made it 590.57. So if you look at those two numbers, yeah, you did pretty good. I mean, it went up, it went up what? 50?
Looks like Dave remembered what he wanted to say. Dave, you wanna go ahead?
Yep. Um, so I did, this time I wrote it down. So there's a lot, you know, over the last couple of years anyway, there'll be, there's a lot of back and forth about this reappraisal or not reappraisal. Weathersfield hasn't reappraised since I think 2009. And it's, and it's partly been my fault saying that I don't wanna reappraise again, because I don't. Um, and, and in fact, when you study the sheets that get printed from the state of Vermont, from the ed and the tax department, there are towns that have, are being forced to reappraise again, that reappraised before, so it really didn't matter. Our town manager, Brandon, has got down in print, uh, actually what our CLA was. And up until COVID, it was, it had changed like maybe 2%. It wasn't really, it wasn't really that volatile. The fascinating thing that I found out, and I said it in our, uh, uh, board meeting was the towns that did take up reappraisal, like a mystery and should shock no one, their tax rates don't go down the same proposed, uh, percentage that the reappraisals go up. So somebody's keeping the money. And I think it's probably the state that redistributes it, saying that, aha, your wealth has now doubled. Let's say our grand list doubles here in Weathersfield or maybe goes up 70%. I don't think it's necessarily true that we're gonna get that money back. It, that's a little, that's a lot of problem with the formula. So big, worth a lot of money. We're not gonna get back, back what we're gonna pay in because we're gonna be viewed although, and so the, the other bad part about this is there are not really a lot of companies that are doing reappraisal. I think we got two bids. You know they're gonna be really busy in the next couple of years doing everybody else as well as what's on their plate now. Um, so, I'm afraid that when that information gets dry, we're not gonna be 100%. I've also looked at some towns that are, which is very strange to me. You can pick this document up at the Vermont Tax Department. They're like 110 and 120% of their appraisal. So during their reappraisals, they didn't get accurate either. And even though their tax rate may be lower, they're saying their properties are worth 120,000, not 100. I, I don't get that picture. I think they ought to be honest on the reappraisals and get, get to, get to 100. But, anyway, like this reappraisal thing, I don't, I don't think, I know we gotta do it and everything, but I, but I'm also a little skeptical about the outcome and what's gonna happen.
Thanks, Dave. Christian Craig has his hand raised. Go ahead, Christian.
Ed, just a quick question. If you could go back to the last, at last slide on the impact to taxpayers?
Okay.
So if I understood correctly from earlier in the presentation, it makes no sense to cut the budget because it'd have to have pretty large, uh, and impactful cuts to the Weathersfield budget in order to make any impact on the, um, tax rate scenarios. Um, so it makes no sense to cut the budget. We're just kind of left to, um, absorb this increase, uh, uh, as it's proposed. Is that a correct understanding?
Yeah, unfortunately, yeah, yes. I mean, again, if you do wanna cut, when you cut, because they froze it in this broad range, you, you literally could raise your budget by $808,000 and not affect your tax rate.
What's the downside of doing that?
Christian, I, I, honest to God, I, I don't have an answer to that. I've been pulling my hair out for two months trying to figure that out. I thought I had it wrong for a long time. I thought that they were gonna apply the 5% to the, to the, to the, uh, tax rate after the CLA adjustment, but then when I found out it was pre-CLA, it changed everything. They froze the pre-CLA for a huge chunk of increases. And John is saying the yield number in May is the downside. That's what he's saying. He's saying that, you know, what ends up happening is if everybody does what you're talking about, it, that, that money is gonna have to be made up somehow. Some of it will get picked up by non-homestead, some of it may get picked up by another tax somewhere. But another way to do it is to raise the yield. And when they raise the yield, they essentially raise your taxes.
Even further.
Even further.
You meant lower the yield, Ed, right?
No, raise the-
If they raise the yield?
No.
It's lowering-
Lower the yield, I'm sorry.
It's confusing.
Thanks.
So the deal is, is that there's nothing we can do here.
The deal is Brennan Barrett, right?
Yeah, but, uh, but I don't think we wanna go crazy because we're hoping everybody else in the state are gonna do their part and we're all gonna keep this yield at least where it's at, if not make it go higher. So is that, is that the end of the budget presentation?
Yeah, that, that is the end of the presentation. Um, sorry for the, for the bad news. As, as Ed said, we've been working on this for months and it's been super complicated and confusing and I have to give Ed kudos because, um, he's really stuck to it and Brian and, um, so it is bad, it is not great news. Um, but I can, I can tell you that Brian's put forth a a budget that's going to meet the needs of our kids and I think, and that's what I try to keep in my head, um, to rationalize it. If that makes any sense.
Um, the one question that I did have, I don't know if it was just a mistake on some of the stuff I was sent earlier- Um, the one question that I did have, I don't know if it was just a mistake on some of the stuff I was sent earlier, but it said that, um, that we had exceeded some kind of limit by like almost $500,000.
No.
Brian, I think you know what I'm talking about. Maybe you can remember better than me.
Um, in the beginning, when we were doing this, we were trying to project what the maximum amount you could spend was. And then we were saying, what are you going to have to cut to get under the, that 10%? And because we was, we were moving around and everybody was trying to figure out how to calculate it. There were a bunch of numbers being thrown around. And at one time I said to Brian, it could be up to 500,000. And, and it, that turned out to be wrong.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so we're not in danger of being penalized by anything in this budget?
No, in the past, there has been a part of the budget or part of this that there was a penalty on the per pupil cost, but they suspended that till 2029, I believe. So that whole, that whole section, yeah. The whole, the excess spending threshold penalty has been suspended through, uh, through 2029. But per the legislature.
Okay. So. Uh, do you have any superintendent's report?
Um, I just had one, one thing to bring back, uh, which was a question from last month um, that Carrie asked. Let me just see if I can get to the right, if I'm on the right slide. So it was a follow-up. Hold on, I gotta get there. On the, uh, out of the total number of students in special education in Windsor Southeast, what is the percentage in each district? So I, I did get that information from our Director of Student Support Services. So Weathersfield is at 26%, Hartland's at 33, and Non-SCUP is at, at 41%. And, um, as you know, those, those numbers ebb and flow depending on students who are in our district. We can have move-ins or move-outs. And so that does change over time. I think for Weathersfield currently, the, the share of the SU budget that Weathersfield, um, of the assessment is, I believe, 25.9%. So you're in line, um, if that makes sense. So I did want to bring back that, um, the answer to that question. But we, no, no big report from me tonight either because it's, it's a budget night.
Okay. Carrie George says thank you.
Oh, yeah, you're very welcome. So I, am I, can I stop presenting or would you like me to? Okay.
They might need you to bring something up if when we're discussing budget, we need to look at anything. So up next is items for discussion and, um, oh, we did have, Brian, we forgot to add, we did have, um, something to add to the meeting tonight, and that was the, uh, the foreign language teacher agreement with, uh, the Weathersfield teachers?
Right, yeah. So we have the, the MOU, the, um, Miranda of Understanding for us to be able to use, uh, online service this year for, the remainder of this year for, um, a foreign language, and then it'll sunset at the end of this, of the school year.
Okay.
So I shared that with the board.
Yeah. Did everyone on the board have a chance to read that over?
Was that email to us?
Yes, it was shared with you today because I got the final one. I shared it with Anne Marie before. And it was the same one before Vince. There was just a couple of changes that we agreed upon between the board and the union.
Okay, um, if everybody's not comfortable voting on that right now until we discuss it, we can go into executive session and talk about it a bit. It's a labor issue, so we have to go executive for it.
Uh, Brian, could you share that to me again? I don't, I don't see that I have that. Thank you.
Same for me too, please, Brian.
Yes, me also. I didn't get it either.
Anne Marie, can we just have a short executive session at the end of the meeting to address it?
Yeah, I think that'll, that's okay. Okay. All right, let's move on and we'll, we'll give everybody a chance to take a look at that and we'll talk about it later this evening. Um, so we'll move on to the FY25 budget discussion. Um, and we also need to confirm the FY25 budget informational meeting, um, for Saturday, March 2nd at 10:00 AM. Um, why don't we do that one first? Because it's quicker, easier, not as much, not as, uh, much hand wringing over that. It's been proposed to me that we only do in-person because there's, from what I understand, and, uh, John, you can correct me if this is incorrect, but it seems that the legislature did not make any changes to those rules. So you would need to be in-person to vote. If it's a, if it's a hybrid meeting or an in-person meeting, you would need to be in-person to vote. You can't vote remotely unless it's a fully remote meeting. Is that still correct? Is John here still?
Yeah, he's still there. We're just waiting for a response from him.
Okay. Um, because my feeling is, is that, uh, I know last year we had people upset that were online that couldn't vote. So I think we should either go fully remote or fully in-person. Um, I think people like in-person better for town meeting and I mean, we're sort of coming out of COVID. I think we'll be through this latest wave and probably in a good shape as far as, uh, cold and flu season goes, cold, flu and COVID season, how it is. That, uh, in-person meeting would be nice for this year. Um, if anyone has any other opinions on that, go ahead and raise your hands. Um, now Dave is saying that the town is going to be in-person. So Dave, is that in-person only? No hybrid? I'm going to assume that since he didn't say hybrid.
Last time I talked with Brandon, that that was going to be the case. Whatever we did, they were going to do, if we were going to share a Google link or not, but they would follow suit on what we were doing.
Okay. He doesn't know the details, but I'm correct about the voting. So, um, okay. So how does everyone feel about having it be, uh, just an in-person, old-fashioned town meeting?
Yes, I'm in favor.
Okay.
Mark's in favor.
Okay. Yeah. Sounds good. Do we need a vote on that or is that just something we just decide?
I think you just decide that.
Okay.
That's fine. So I will let Lori know it's just in-person, no hybrid option.
Okay.
On that.
And I'll contact Brandon from, um, the town manager.
Yeah. And people, um, still can watch it from home. Uh, we're going to invite Sapa TV to be there. So, um, people can watch it live or they can watch it recorded later. They'll still be able to get the same information, but as voting can only take place in person, it makes sense just to have it in person. And then that way there's no confusion for people online thinking they're going to get to vote. All right. Um, so now we'll go back to the FY25 budget. So as far as I can tell, oh, Carrie has her hand raised. Yes, Carrie?
I just wanted to squeak in before it goes to like a vote and I wouldn't get a chance to say anything. I, I just wondered if, um, with, I feel like everyone is just kind of speechless. Uh, it seems kind of just across the board, like no, there's just nothing coming to my mouth. But, um, I guess I'm just saying, I hope there's an opportunity for you all and maybe, um, the BAC to just have some more input before there's a vote. And I, you haven't said if you are or not. I just want to say that I, I think that it feels like there's a room for more discussion or more understanding. And, and certainly if there is an opportunity to spend some more money, whatever feels appropriate. I would hope that that could be entertained. Uh, that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie. Um, I mean, Ed, I don't think there's any likelihood that we're going to have any more clarity, correct, before our voting takes place?
No, I don't, I did, no, I don't think so.
Um, so I guess the discussion would be how people feel about, um, sticking with what we've got, if we want to do draconian cuts and cut $800,000 from the budget in the hopes of lowering taxes to, you know, a couple percentage or whatever. Or if, um, or if we want to just, you know, leave it as it is and hope that the yield gets better. Or if we want to add some things because it does, because it doesn't emit, it matters. Like, like John said, it, it will matter in the end, um, if we add a lot of stuff. Because if everybody adds a lot of stuff, then the yield's going to go lower, which means property taxes will be even higher than what we're approving now. Uh, Christian Craig, you have your hand up.
Sorry, I just wanted to read John's comment there, the way I understand voting as you do. So there's no understanding of what, uh, what adding to the budget would impact Weathersfield? There's no ramifications if we added $800,000 to our budget?
Not right now. But if the legislature changes the yield in May, there could be, it could raise your tax rate. So what I'm reporting to you is I'm giving you a tax rate based on the best information I have right now, which is a yield of $9,452. But if everybody comes in, what John is saying, higher or closer to 10% increases, then the money that we're trying to figure out where it's going to come from is going to come from, like I said, Homestead, non-Homestead taxers. And they're going to change the yield. They'll lower the yield, which will increase your tax rate. But we, I can't tell you what that number is going to be. I can't tell you what's going to happen because I don't know how all the other towns in the state are, are dealing with this.
Ed, is this a normal, uh, AOE, um, modus operandi? Is this what they do every year? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not familiar with the budget process.
No, this is, this is an entirely new thing. This is not something I haven't ever seen before.
Thank you.
I can tell you, I don't like it. I don't like it at all. Um, it doesn't, to me, it doesn't make sense that us cutting or adding doesn't change our tax rate. Um, I don't, it feels.
Yeah, we're, we're gambling a little bit either way.
Yeah. I don't, I don't think the school budget should be a gambling enterprise. And so I feel like whoever came up with the system didn't fully think this out. I don't, I don't know. Um, how are, how are people feeling about what we should do? I mean, I'm thinking we should at least take some of that money and put it into our capital reserves just because we have spent some of it in the past couple of years. And I'd like to refill those coffers. But I don't really want to go crazy with other budget additions. I don't, I feel like we should do our part to try to, oh, I mean, or high as possible. Sorry, that's confusing too. But do our part to, uh, try to keep education spending in control. How are, how are other people feeling? Anybody want to say anything?
I like the budget we've crafted. Uh, I think it takes care of the needs of our students, uh, and doesn't overspend. I would be very leery about trying to take advantage of, not in a negative sense. I mean, you don't want to leave money on the table, but I really feel like the, the state as a whole is going to pay, uh, if everybody else pushes that 10% level. I say we move forward with the numbers we have. Thanks.
Um, uh, Dave has typed in here, is there any prepaid debt to, any prepaid debt to pay down? Um, like, I guess he's wondering if we could just maybe pay off, uh, I think the only debt we have is, uh, the building debt, correct? I mean, if we just, they paid that off this year. I don't know. I suppose that's something to think about. What? Is that even possible? Are we allowed to prepay on that loan?
You're always allowed to prepay.
Wait, wait. What are the borrowing costs on that debt already? Are they, are they fairly low because it's old?
Yeah, it's, it's, um, a little less than 3%.
Yeah, use the bank's money.
That's what I feel like. You're right.
Our interest for next year is 26,000.
Can we prepay that? Like, can we pay that now?
No, not, not, not next year's.
Yeah, so we can. And the full payoff is a lot, right? What's the full payoff?
Uh, the full payoff, let's see. You'd be fully done with the payments as of, uh, hold on.
Well, it's 2028 that we're done paying on the bond, but, um, what would be the payoff today for that bond?
1.176 million dollars.
Okay. That seems like we probably don't want to go there. That's a lot and that's going to add to the, the Ed spending across the state, so.
Somebody just give us an example of where some of that money does get used that goes back into reserves. I know Anne Marie just mentioned that we've used a fair amount of it, but give us some examples of where that's going and what it's needed for.
It's, it's, well, we've used it for building maintenance. I know we, uh, had some boiler repairs that we paid for out of it. I guess, well, Brian or BJ would probably be better to answer, so I'll let them answer.
Yeah, we used some of it, uh, a couple of years ago for our Makerspace to be able to use that funding for that, to be able to change the computer lab into a Makerspace. We also do use it for repairs. We used it to purchase our tractor to help out. Um, and then the building is getting older, so we will have some repairs coming up. Um, we have some doors that need to be replaced because they're, they're older and they're starting to get a little bit rusty in parts, so we'd use it for some of those type of items.
So in your repairs and maintenance item, line item, what's exactly being considered a repair and maintenance then?
Those are regular maintenance items. These are like, um, for the capital reserves would be more big ticket items. So like if our wood chipper goes out, if, you know, bigger, bigger items that we would possibly need for later on, the regular maintenance on there is just regular maintenance to keep the building running as smoothly as possible.
I, um, I was under the impression that the Hicks Nichols Fund, uh, or Grant funded the Makerspace?
Not all of them.
It funded some of the items that went in the Makerspace, not the actual furniture and the changing over and everything else of that. So it funded some of it, um, some of the items for the kids to use.
Um, John Arison makes a comment, use it if you're running red ink some year. Not sure exactly what he means there, but I, I don't think we can use the capital reserve. If he's talking about capital reserves, I don't think we can use that for budget shortfalls. That's just strictly for building related things, right?
You'd have to vote on whether or not you'd allow it for that.
Okay.
You could transfer it into one separate fund and then you could use it for a debt relief or whatever, and then you could turn around.
So we, so if, if some year we need.
It depends on how the article's written.
Okay.
You could write the article and you could ask for that money.
Okay.
Do we have a, uh, a balance in that fund now? Somewhere I'm not seeing?
228,043 dollars.
Are there a list of things, building-wise, maintenance-wise, that we can get on top of with the, with that funding? And just be ahead of it?
So the, the state just went through, the state just paid for building assessments. They went around the whole state and they did a building appraisal on every building in the state. And that was in, for a, to get a better idea of the shape of the buildings and what it would cost to get buildings up to speed, all the buildings. And that's because right after Weathersfield got the finance to do the renovation that they did back in 20, I don't know, 2010 or 20, I can't remember the date. But anyway, back then, you guys were part and got a very, you had 50, almost 60% of the money that paid for your renovation came from the state. And once that happened, the state got in over their head, so they had to drag out the final payment to you guys for four years. And over those four years, we had to take out a note to cover the cost of that, and that interest fell to the district because the state couldn't fulfill their payment. So that experience, they suspended all their capital, all the capital spending statewide. And because of that, there's been, buildings have been deteriorating because nobody's got the money to go ahead. Now they're, they're looking at putting, or putting together a fund to start to catch up on some of that maintenance. So I guess what I'm saying is there are things that need to be done, but your building is fairly new in the SU and in the state. So I would think that you guys are in better shape. So your capital reserve is mostly for catastrophic things, things that blow up, that you don't have the money in the budget to do, or things that you guys want to do that are more expensive than you want to put in the budget and raise taxes on in a given year. So yes, we do have a list of things, and we certainly look at that list, but my counsel has been, I want to see how the state comes up with. There's John saying, there is, there is discussion to start school construction again, and they're looking at $2 billion. But if they start throwing around that kind of money, I would say Weathersfield should get in line.
Okay. So, so, so how, like, what are people feeling? What, do you want to vote on a budget tonight? Do we want to make any changes to the budget? Dave has a question.
Hi, Anne. So I just want to get this right, because I've always, whenever I've served the town or the school a long time ago, I've never had a problem standing up to people and say what you need. So if you're, if you're, if something happened to the building, obviously, it's like being, I've always treated this, including anything that has to do with the town, as like a house. You know, if you need a new roof, just tell me and then give that presentation. Here's, here's what I just learned, though, in the last hour. And, and you guys have a really hard decision to make, I think. If I just heard this correctly, you have $228,000 already in a reserve account. You're thinking about adding an additional $550,000 that is from a surplus off of 23, is that correct?
We're not sure exactly the amount, but yes, that's from the surplus.
So the, so the risk here is purely as voters. So if you do that, you'll have $770,000 or so in an account somewhere to get ready for something that you might imagine. And then you're gonna ask for a 23 cent tax increase. That's a lot for a voter to take. I don't know the happy medium, and I get, I get all this talk about what the state might do or the state not, not might do, but the reality is that's a really lot to swallow right there, because you remember that a penny is about 34 cents. So that would mean you have $770,000 in the bank for something that's undefined, kind of.
I guess the thought is, though, Dave, is that even if we, even if we put all that money back into this year's budget, it doesn't change that tax rate one cent.
No, no, I'm not saying that either.
We're giving away the Weathersfield taxpayers' money, you know what I mean? We're just giving it.
What I'm saying is, if I'm a voter and I'm coming into this, I'm saying that my bank account already has 230, and I have this money extra, and now I have to pay more for something, that's, that's really confusing for me. So there's risk.
Yeah. Christian?
Dave, would it make more sense to, to find a project to do with that money?
Well, well, that's where I was going with the prepaid debt. The town has done just that. We've took, for instance, we have a road grader, I can't remember what it costs, $20,000 a year or more for debt. And then, so we, we paid like a year or two in advance. I don't know, all this is news to me, what you guys are hearing too. It's a really hard position right now. The town really wants to work together with the schools to build, and then we met with you, Anne, and Christine about making sure somehow we can build a model that will last. But this sure does throw a curve in it with this large tax increase, if it's from the state. I don't know what they would do with all the money, quite honestly. I mean, think about it, think about all this new money. Where's it gonna go if it's not coming back to us?
It's tough. Carrie?
I feel a responsibility to just add if there's going to be considerations, which people will line up to say, here's what I need. We have a really great athletics program that would benefit from additional funds, so I just want to put that out there to be considered.
Okay, thanks, Carrie. Does anyone on the BAC, or, I mean, Mark gave his opinion that he thinks we're good where we're at? If anybody has anything to add where they think that there's something that, if they know of $800,000 that can be cut, or easily without, you know, harming students' outcomes? Or, or if they can think of something, you know, that they really think should be added? So Jessica?
Thanks, Anne Marie. So I guess as a BAC member, there's a small part of me that wants to ask the other BAC members that are on the call, like, there's a part that wants to get back together as a BAC and look at the budget, right? Like, that's sort of our responsibility, and like, maybe we can look at it and suggest changes or additions where we think we can increase. I agree with Mark of like, leaving it and not pushing the buttons too much, but I don't know. I don't know, I guess Christian or anybody else that's on the BAC committee, like, your feelings of, part of me wants the BAC to reconvene and look at this with all this information, because a lot of this information is new to us, and we didn't have that when we were considering the budget.
Christian?
I'm really apprehensive to add anything else to the budget without knowing the impacts. It's really, really difficult, a position to be in, and I blame the state and the agency of education on this to, to be in such a precarious position. I think the only thing that I would feel comfortable looking at or discussing is a reallocation of that $500,000 from the reserve fund and how that could be better used to serve Weathersfield students. But that would be the only thing that I would feel comfortable with for the BAC.
Kelly O'Brien has her hand raised.
I just have a, something that I would want to say. I think you should take some of that money, set it aside in account for future tax relief. I think that has to also go to the town to be voted on, but I think we should set some money aside for something like that, just in case, because we don't know what's really gonna happen in the years coming. And I think, I think you almost have to put a date on how long that can be in there. I'm not sure from when we did it before. But I wouldn't put all of it in there. I would do that and then find something to spend the rest of it on if we, I mean, put some of it in capital reserves and then find something to use it on.
Thanks, Kelly. So that is a possibility. I mean, I guess, to me, I guess for like the next five years or however long we have this system in place, there's not really much you can do for tax relief, other than to get your CLA in order. Kelly?
Yeah, but the state can change that next year. How do we know they won't change it?
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
We never know from one year to the next.
No, we don't. Okay. I mean, right now, I feel a lot of confusion, and I feel like maybe we should just sleep on it. I don't know if I'm, if I'm feeling ready to vote on it, I mean. And if people want to maybe think about if there are any, you know, projects that we could do with some of that surplus from last year. I guess if we had a, if we had a project in mind, it sounds like Dave thinks that would feel better to the voters. So I don't know if we want to think about that, take some time, or if people are ready to vote tonight. Brian, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that I can definitely reconvene the BAC. We can talk a little bit about it, as far as, especially with that reserve money that we have right now, or the, the surplus from last year, from FY23. So we could do that, and then look at some, maybe some projects around the school and get some suggestions from them. I think it's a great idea to have BAC meet again, because this is new information. And I agree with Christian about using, being apprehensive, but using that money that maybe we have in surplus.
Okay. I have a comment from John that says, suggest finding the wordage that created the reserve. So if somebody wants to find that, I don't know if that's something we can find before the end of this meeting or if that would have to be after the meeting. But whatever the wording is on our reserve fund, our capital reserve fund. And Becky has a question.
I just wanted to say, I agree with Kelly, they did that in the past and about the, you know, for future times you might need the money. It's not in the, the part for just the building. I think that's a very prudent thing to do, that also like what Dave was saying, that taxpayers may feel fine about rather than be not understanding. It's gonna be hard to present this budget because it's so confusing to people. But I appreciate you all being prudent. My other suggestion would be to direct anything that's gonna directly help benefit students' education, you know, in a very, very direct way. Like, I think the makerspace was a great thing, you know, that's not just one part of their education, but, you know, more rounded or whatever, like, you know, something that would really help students be able to learn, you know, better, or in a different way. That would, where I personally would love to see it go.
Yep. Vincent has his hand raised?
Just a quick, this is a question for Christine, but when and how do negotiations change anything on this budget?
It likely won't, because we won't, we won't have that information before the budget goes to the vote.
Right.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't dodging a bullet there.
Yeah. Okay.
John, sorry, John Arison just says that, I guess he's saying we would need to warn a new article for reserve for tax stabilization? That's if we decide to do that route. Christine?
Yeah, I just want to, depending on whatever you decide tonight, just as a timeline, we do need to get the annual report to print. BJ's confirmed by January 20th, and the budget goes in that booklet. So if you want to get the BAC back together, we're just gonna have to warn another meeting for the board before that date.
Okay. So, so we have to be done, we would have to approve a budget before, like, the 19th would be the very last day?
That would be helpful, yes.
Okay. Dave has his hand raised?
I'd just like to remind all of you, if you want to craft an article for the ballot, if it doesn't involve any money, it could be a floor vote. So that's kind of important to remember. So i- if it has money in the article, then it would have to go to Australian ballot. But if it's a conceptual wording about an article, for instance, with no money attached, then you leave it up to the school board to determine what money would go in there, then that could be a floor vote. So that's, that's what I wanted to make, and maybe somebody from the school can work together with Floanne, who's the town clerk, you know, make sure you get it all right. I know that the, the dates for her, I think like, most of it has to get done by like 29th of January or something, so there's a different cutoff date. But for articles for the warning, if it doesn't have any money in it, it could be a floor vote, not Australian ballot.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay. So, so we want, so are we, is that where we're leaning towards? Having the BAC just take another look? You know, they can consider, you know, adding to athletics or whatever else they want to consider. I don't, I don't want to see the budget get out of control, though. I'm, I'm not looking to spend another $800,000, even though, you know, they say we can, but I, I don't think that that's really the team player route to go as far as education funds for the, you know, for the state. Vincent?
And I'm on board with that comment. I'm just wondering if three years from now, we would have missed an opportunity to spend anything that we really want to right now that stays with us in the upcoming years. Yeah, I'm trying to understand the fiscal responsibility that we need to undertake, but will we ever have that opportunity again?
Yeah. I'm also wondering how, how, how we're gonna pass this budget. Like, we're really, I don't know how the state expects that every town in the state is gonna vote these huge tax increases. I, I don't know, like, so what happens?
Oh, they're, they'll take care of us.
I mean, what happens, you know? It's, it's really, like Ed said, you want to pull your hair out. Okay. So, so I guess, Brian, I'll leave you to, to, you know, gather up and see if you guys can get together. How many days do you need to, like, do you need to warn your BAC meetings or?
I don't believe we need to warn our BAC meeting, so we can just, I can reach out to everybody.
You guys can meet relatively quickly?
Yeah, we can do relatively quickly, and then we can meet again next week as a board.
Yeah. I mean, I have the 16th open. I don't know how everybody else is for the 16th. Good, Vincent? Sarah's good?
Yes.
I can do this, teens, can we make sure we get the findings from the BAC to Ed to see how that changes any of our numbers, if any, change? Is there time to do that between when you meet with the BAC and us meeting on the 16th?
Yes, I'm sure we can do that.
Thank you.
So I didn't hear, Jamie, is that 16th okay with you?
Yep.
Okay, so that's, that's everybody, I think. Oh, Becky, Becky, 16th, good for you?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
The same time.
Yep, same time. Okay. All right, so, so I guess that's where we'll, we'll leave the budget for tonight. Do we have any guidance for the BAC other than be fiscally responsible? Christian?
I think the only thing I'm, I'm interested in, in looking at is where to put that half a million dollars from the reserve. And that would be my marching orders and advocacy, but I would want to know the impact of taking that out as well. So I don't know if that's possible for Ed to give us some information on what that does to the tax rate if we take that $500,000 out.
As far as, as far as I know, I mean, is Ed still here? But as far as I know, it doesn't change it at all.
No, it doesn't. It doesn't change it.
Perfect, thank you.
I think that we could just, a part of your meeting could include a list of projects that have been on the burner, uh, the back burner that we, um, really could get done while benefiting the building, the property, the students, or whatever it is. Um, so in your meeting, I think coming back to the board with a list of those things and why, would be helpful if we're going to spend any of this.
Yeah. And also, um, I don't know if it's really the BAC's responsibility, but before our next meeting, I'd like just, um, to sort of have it clarified, what, how we would handle this whole, um, you know, reserve for, uh, tax stabilization, uh, question. And how that kind of worked out, the language of that, um. If we plan to put some of that money towards that as well. Is that something that?
We could, we can look into that. I, I think, um, Ed, Ed was mentioning it may have been done before, so we can look at the old warnings and find the language.
Okay. All right, um. I guess unless anybody has anything more to offer for the budget discussion, um, I think Christian's marching orders sound good to me. Um. Uh, so we'll leave it at that. Okay? All right, um, let's see, what else do we have? Um, let's set the next agenda. So our next meeting is going to be in a week. Um, and it'll be just the budget. Nothing else. Um, and should we set, we'll set our, also our, uh, February meeting. So our February meeting is February 13th at 6:30. Um. I have, I have not even thought past the budget at this point, so if anybody has any ideas of things they want to add, um, items for discussion for that meeting, I think we, oh, I know, um, there was to be a discussion, um, Jamie was gonna, there's a committee formed to talk to the teachers about the new curriculum. Um, so maybe if we can talk about what's going on with that at the February meeting. That's the only thing that I can think of that we have going on. I guess we'll have our usual, um. I mean, I suppose we'll still have, we'll have to talk about getting ready for, uh, for town meeting, how we're going to present the budget.
Yeah, mine will be my, my major presentation for the, for the budget presentation for the town meeting.
Okay, because this is going to be a tough one. I don't know how we explain this because I, I don't understand it, so. Um, I don't know how we explain it to everybody. Um, it's upsetting. Um. So John, hold on, John. Okay, I think we already were over this, warn a new article and just a thought. Yeah, okay. Um, yeah, we already were over that. Uh, okay, so I guess that's probably enough unless somebody else can think of something they want to discuss in February. Okay. Um. I was just going to say, is Ed available on March 2nd?
I'm sure he would make himself available, right, Ed?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. All right. Um. Okay, so, uh, I guess that's it for our next meeting. Um, I'll take a motion to go into executive session.
I'll motion.
Okay, Sarah made that motion. All in favor, say, I guess I'll take a roll call because it's, uh, online. Um, Mark?
Aye.
Vincent?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
I'll also be an aye, so we're going to enter executive session at 8:05. And, uh, we'll get the rest of the times to you, Becky.
Thank you.
So if everybody wants to leave except for the board and, um, uh, Brian, and I don't know if Christina, if Christine wants to stay on or not.
I'm fine either way. You, you can direct me.
Like, I'll let, I'll let Brian decide. I don't know. It's his.
Brian?
Yeah, you can say Christine.
Thanks, everybody.
Still, um, let me, I can.
John.
I can hang John up, I think. Let me just try here. Yep, I can remove him. Bye, John. No, that's everybody, I think.
All right. So I apologize. I thought I sent it to you. I just checked through as I sent it during the meeting and I had not sent it to you. I cheered a damn Marie, but not everybody else, so I apologize to everybody else. Um, it was the same basic MOU that we had looked at before, but we did clarify a couple of items in there and made them a little bit more specific because we didn't know how the budget was going to go and if we were going to have room in our budget to try to hire a world language teacher. So we added the lines that stated, um, pending budgetary constraints on number two and then also on number three. And then we wanted to make sure that it specified that the Weathersfield School Board will commit to working collaboratively, collaboratively with the union and the SU board on addressing the causes of not being able to attract qualified staff. We wanted to make sure that we had those three items in there. So just the budgetary constraints twice and then the SU one in there so that it wasn't just aimed at, that it was Weathersfield that wasn't able to get a Spanish teacher. It's, it's a whole epidemic and just to see generally what we can do. So we made those. I got the okay, sent it back to the union with the, those word changes on there and they were fine with it. So I just want to bring it back to everybody to make sure so that our students can start making Spanish through VTBLC on the 29th, be Spanish or French. There's an option for Japanese as well, but that seems a little bit more intense, so I'm not sure if we're going to do that through VTBLC because it's more of a traditional class rather than an on-demand class. Um, and then one of the things that were, bless you, um, Vince, um, and then one of the things that we, um, are also doing is talking with VTBLC, we're able to get them an introduction to online courses that will help students in the future. Um, not only for this course here that they're taking at Weathersfield, but in their future educational endeavors as well. So it's, we're really excited meeting with them and getting more of the options. And we did limit the amount of options that kids can take. I think we limited it to five classes. Um, so there are right now, I think there's 27 kids that are signed up for some type of self-determined learning. Um, and so with that being said, um, the foreign language is one of the big ones that the kids want. So getting that, be able to work with the union was very helpful.
So you just, you need to take a vote, unagree?
Yep, and then Anne Marie, if we, if we agree, then just to sign off on it and then we can put it into place and.
But we'll need to do the vote out, back out of executive session, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, uh, does anyone have any questions about it or disagree with signing it? I think it's good just to even just kind of see how it goes. Um, I'd like to see how the online learning goes, uh, how they do. Although I'm, I'm curious as to how they finish up a class starting at so late in the school year. Is it like a half-year program?
Yeah, it's a half-year. It's a semester-long course form, which is nice.
Okay.
Um, and then, um, both of the people that are in charge of VTBLC live relatively close. So if we need more assistance as well, they can come in and help us in, you know, in, in school as well, which is nice.
That's awesome.
So, yeah, they're really trying to work to make this a future endeavor. So, and I know this is going to sunset at the end of this school year, but if the needs there, then we can use it for other things that we normally can't offer at school. So, or that aren't in the budget as we learned, so.
Okay. All right, um. Any other questions or is everybody ready to go out of executive session? And if so, I'll take a motion to leave executive session.
So moved?
Okay, um. I'll go with, uh, Sarah?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Vincent?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
I'm an aye, so we'll leave executive session at 8:10.
Who made this, who seconded the motion?
We don't second it. It's a small board's rule.
It's a small board, okay.
Um. Thanks for being our minute taker.
Yeah, I'll send it, I'll send it to Becky for you.
Um, okay, so we're back out in session. I'll take a motion to approve the, um, what's it, what are we going to call this, Brian?
It's an MOU for foreign language.
Okay, so the foreign language MOU? I'll take. Mark made the motion?
I'll second.
Okay, and, uh, let me take a vote. Uh, we'll go with Jamie.
Hi.
Sarah?
Aye.
Vincent?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And I'll also be an aye. That's unanimous? Okay, um, anything else before we finish up for the day?
I have one side for Brian and Christine. Brian, is there any way you could get the information from the cordless mic purchases that we made last year to Christine? Um, she was asking about what, what purchase it is we made, um, for our group for another school in the district.
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay. If there's nothing else, uh, we'll, uh, take a motion to adjourn till next week.
I'll make a motion.
Sorry. He got Vincent. He got in there first. Okay. All right, uh, so, um, roll call, Sarah?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Vincent?
Aye.
I'm also an aye. Okay, we're done for the day, so we're adjourning at 8:12.
Okay. Awesome, thank you.
Good night.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.